The Athletics Subcommittee meeting, and the committee of the whole meeting. Roll call, please.
Member Peña?
Present.
Member Castellanos? Absent. Member Dugan?
Present.
So, the first subject we have is the tournament.
I'm happy to invite Adolf Graciel, who's the Assistant Director for Health and Wellness, and oversees athletics in partnership with Deputy Superintendent Regiro, who can offer some insight to recent events as it relates to the tournament. Mr. Graciel.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Tetwala, for introducing me. First, we would like to apologize the way the information regarding the Boverini tournament came out. It was never the intent to have it reported in a manner that it was, and it was unfortunate that it was done in that way. Secondly, we have the utmost respect for the late Walter Boverini and his family. We appreciate all that he has done for the city and the state of Massachusetts. This move has nothing to do with the Boverini name at all. The Boverini tournament will still live on through the continuation of the tournament with St. Mary's. Our philosophy in the Lynn Public Schools is all about the kids and keeping a level playing field for the student athletes that we have. Athletes have had difficulties competing in the Boverini tournament in the years past. The A.D.s and the coaches have had many conversations around how to alleviate the feelings of the defeat athletes that we have experienced over the past many years. We have discussed the ideas of scheduling a tournament that involves all Lynn Public Schools. This includes Lynn Classical High School, Lynn English, Lynn Tech, and KIP Academy. Adding KIP Academy will equal the playing field since they're in the same conference as Lynn Tech. They're in Commonwealth Conference already, so we're already in the same league, and Lynn English and Lynn Classical are already in the GBL. So, we'll have all public schools in both will be in two different conferences. We believe that this will provide a more competitive tournament that equals, I mean, that includes all Lynn Public School athletes, and will make the playing field a lot much level. With that being said, I would like to introduce Tom Sawyer, who has been the head basketball coach at Lynn Classical High School for the past 19 years, to talk about his experience with his own players and himself as well.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Adolf. Thank you for inviting me, Mr. Devon, my A.D., and being at Lynn Classical. And I can talk a little bit about the Christmas tournament, the Boverini tournament, because I've experienced it for a long time now. One thing that's the same is all of the girls that I've coached like playing against other Lynn student athletes. They enjoy that. The issue with the tournament over the last number of years, especially five, has been the lack of competitiveness, and I can only speak to the girl's side because that's what I know, the lack of competitiveness on the girl's side. I could give you the scores you don't want to know. You know, the games are forty or fifty points difference. As a coach, if I lost by fifteen, twenty points every year, I would never complain, right? You're competitive, you're in the game, you just may never win. I would have no problem with that. When it gets to a game on either side, and you're in a basketball game, winning or losing by forty or fifty points, it becomes more difficult to manage. And that's been the issue with this tournament, again, on the girl's side especially, again, what I know, over the last five, six, seven years. If I saw a cycle coming where I thought that things would change, be different, then I would be thinking, I would think differently, and when I talked to Mr. Devon, I would have different thoughts when he asked me to share them. But I don't see that, that cycle that you typically see in high school athletics, I don't see that forthcoming. So, again, thank you.
Thank you.
And like I mentioned before, I've been, I was also the Athletic Director for Lynn Tech for the past three years, and from my perspective as being the Athletic Director, I hosted the tournament myself at Lynn Tech. And, you know, in the boys' score, we played St. Mary's, we lost by seventy points, and the Jackson that I've seen on the kids' faces, no one's benefited anything from that, nothing at all. So, with future discussions that we've had around these issues and scheduling a tournament in the future, in these discussions, we've also agreed that it'll be needed to be named after a prominent Lynn educator, coach, and mentor. So, our wish is to name the Lynn Public School Tournament, the Ron Bennett Memorial Tournament. We're here to ask for your support in giving this tournament the Ron Bennett Tournament, Memorial Tournament name. So, that's what we're here for, to, with your wishes, to give us that permission to do it.
You have any questions? Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, I totally appreciate everything you said. I think, you know, your statements totally covered, you know, the questions I had. As a committee member, I think what I found out, and what I already knew, was that the citizens of Lynn are very passionate about their sports. And so, my concern was that I just were getting, was getting a lot of questions that I couldn't answer, you know, about why it was, why it happened, and, you know, what was going on there. So, I do appreciate you coming and explaining. You know, obviously, we're for the kids, and, you know, I do, I ref high school basketball in the winter, I've coached plenty of high school basketball, so I understand exactly where you're coming from. And Coach Sawyer, lots of my friends' daughters play for you, so, you know, a very well-respected coach, so thank you for your efforts. You know, like I said, my only concern was just that it just, reading about it in the newspaper, you know, rather than, you know, coming before us. But, other than that, you know, I feel like, you know, like I said, your statements were very thoughtful, I appreciate you coming before us, and, you know, naming the tournament after Ron Bennett, I think is completely appropriate. You know, and I never played for him, but I know lots of people that did, and, you know, they have nothing but utmost respect for him, so, for Coach Bennett and the things he did for us student athletes. So, you know, like I said, I appreciate everything you've done, and, yeah, I think that's, that's, you know, I'm willing to absolutely support this tournament, so.
Well, thank you for coming in, and you answered a lot of questions, just to piggyback on my colleague, Eric. And thank you for the insight. I play for Ron Bennett myself, and I'm a coach myself, and I totally understand, it's all about the kids, and thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, go ahead, Lorraine.
Thank you. Okay, so, I was a girls' basketball coach, okay? I sat through many of those games. I sat through those games in Winthrop, I sat through those games over against Marblehead, I sat through many, many games, and I know what you're talking about. But now, on the other hand, I also know that it was named after Walter Boverini, and it was voted in by our school committee in 2003 and 2004. And we did recognize Ron Bennett's excellence because we had, the MVP of every tournament is supposed to be named after Ron Bennett. It is totally in the purview of the Athletic Directors to decide who's playing in the tournament and who isn't playing in the tournament. If you do not want St. Mary's playing in this tournament, all you have to do is talk to the Athletic Director and say, "I don't want you playing in this tournament for these reasons." But to the poor family, the poor Walter Boverini family, after he represented us in the service, after he was a teacher, after he served on the state legis, the Senate from 1985 to 1994 as the majority leader, for us just to turn around and say, "Okay, we're gonna just take his name off this tournament." I just don't agree with that. It's just like, what are we gonna take away next? Are we gonna take away Al Malagrifis? It's like we ought, this was already done. It was already made. It's up to you. You can change it. But I would like to see it stay in Lynn Public Schools, the Walter Boverini tournament, anyone you want in it. You can invite all the GBL teams in it if you want. I really don't, that doesn't bother me. But it does bother me that someone got recognition for all his years of dedication to this city, and now we're just gonna take it away from the city. Oh, St. Mary's can keep it? It just doesn't make sense to me to do that. It's very insensitive, and that's all I have to say. But I do understand with those schools, because I've lived it, and I do know what you're talking about. So, I appreciate that.
Go ahead, Donna.
I agree with Ms. Gately because we did name it after him. So, you know, I still don't understand where that tournament was gonna go. Was it just gonna disappear, or was it gonna be sent over to St. Mary's, and St. Mary's was gonna put teams together? You know, it originated in the Lynn Public Schools, you know, so I consider it ours, you know, not something to give away, but we, I consider it something that belongs to us, you know, because one team doesn't have the courtesy to, you know, try to put other players in, and have like a better balance to games. I understand where the students would be, and I understand how the coaches would feel about that. And like Ms. Gately said, I wouldn't have a problem either if you remove somebody and you add people on. You know, you don't need to come to us to ask that. You know, you yourself said, you know, you, I've already made a discussion to have KIP come in, you know, so it's fine. If you, if you need to remove somebody, that's, that's fine with us too, but as far as removing the name, it's, I just don't, I wouldn't agree with that. And, you know, you know, my thought is even, I wouldn't even mind if it said Boverini-Bennett, you know, to make it look like it's a little bit different, you know, being renamed. I know that Ms. Gately said that there is MVP that's named after Ron Bennett, because he was absolutely a phenomenal, wonderful guy. There's no reason, but sometimes we lose sight of that, like the elementary tournament has a name. It's the Thompson, I think it's Gardette was supposed to, and, and every time that's, they have that elementary tournament, they don't even recognize those two names any longer, you know, so to keep it going, I think is a good idea to keep with the name. And, you know, if they wanna, over in St. Mary's, start their own, and they wanna name it Boverini, there's no problem. I mean, there's so many things that have multiple names to it, it wouldn't be a problem. But I think it's something that belongs in the Lynn Public Schools because it was voted on here, and they were asked to join it, but it still belongs to us here. And, you know, Walter, Senator Boverini, really had a big, big influence within the school system as a teacher, and what he did for Lynn, you know, through the office that he held. So, that's what I'd like you to do, not to, not to lose sight of that, but I'd have no problem if you, if you wanted to recognize, or would it look different if it said Boverini-Bennett? You know, at least then, it's looking like a different tournament with different groups that you bring in. It's no, nothing against you, and you probably came up with a, trying to do a good idea and a good thing, but St. Mary's can create their own in a different way, you know, and find their own teams, but I hate to see a man that still has family here and still has a lot of people that remember him and are passionate about him, not to see his name removed like that.
Yeah, I just wanted to just reiterate something that Mr. Graciel said in his comments. The Walter Boverini tournament will still remain in Lynn and will be very much still a part of the winter holiday basketball experience in the city. And I think, based on your comments, my recommendation would be that we take that under advisement and then come back to you with some thoughts about a path forward. But I just wanted to be clear, the idea, nothing, that tournament will still happen, but I get what you're saying, that it's not a Lynn Public Schools tournament. So, I think we take that under advisement and come back to you.
And like, not, just not to interject, but just like we said in the beginning, we had no intention for it to get out into the papers like that. We was, we still had discussions going on about the tournament, so nothing was set in stone, and then it got put out to the papers, and we were surprised ourselves.
That's why we were concerned.
Yep.
So, table it in? Yeah. Motion to table?
Second.
There's not a motion on the floor.
A motion to table, the change?
There's not a motion on the floor.
Yeah, someone just has to say, "Motion to table."
Oh, motion to table. Discussion.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Peña?
Present.
No.
Yes.
Member Castellanos? Absent. Member Dugan?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Roll call.
Yeah, someone just has to say, "Motion to table."
Oh, motion to table. Discussion.
Second. Roll call.
Member Peña? Member Castellanos? Absent. Member Dugan?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Curriculum Subcommittee. Roll call, please. Member Magnolia?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gately?
Present.
I'd like to introduce Ms. Gallo and the LTU Social Justice Committee teachers to give us a presentation on the social justice resources. Yes, no problem.
All right, thank you. Thanks for having us here this evening. We are very excited to share some of the important work that we've been working on. My name is Jacqueline Gallo. I'm the Assistant Director of Curriculum and Instruction for Early Childhood, and I'll let my colleagues introduce themselves.
My name is Michelle Brown. I am a kindergarten teacher at the Washington Elementary School. I'm also one of the co-chairs for the Racial and Social Justice Committee. I'm also one of the facilitators for our Staff of Color affinity group.
I am Kendrii Valdez. I am a Grade One Dual Language teacher over at Carrington, and along with Michelle, I am in the Racial and Social Justice Committee, and also a co-chair for the affinity group for Staff of Color. Also, we worked closely on developing the curriculum maps for K-2 for both Dual Language and Ethnicity.
We have a brief presentation to share, just to orient the committee a little bit on how social justice is incorporated, particularly in early childhood and in kindergarten, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have during or after the presentation. And, here we go. The Social Justice Standards are a set of anchor standards and age-appropriate learning outcomes divided into four domains that are based on Louise Dermon Sparks' Four Goals of Anti-Bias Education in Early Childhood. She's an author and an advocate for social justice and has published many books and articles through National Association for Education of Young Children, the NAEYC. As anti-biased, as an anti-bias approach to teaching and learning rests on four underlying goals that seek to promote, facilitate, and nurture all children's development in identity, both as an individual and as a member of a social group, diversity of all kinds, justice, awareness of fairness, and action, standing up for fairness. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education uses the Social Justice Standards as a resource in documents and in training sessions. Last, the past fall, actually, I attended a series of, a series hosted by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Early Learning Team that was actually facilitated by our friend Matthew Rodriguez, so that was really exciting. And part of the training, the Social Justice Standards were referenced and shared as resources to help educators ensure that all children are able to engage in pedagogies that affirm and promote their sense of self-worth from a racial and ethnic standpoint. And back in 2020, the, a team which consisted of a parent, early childhood educators, curriculum directors, ESL coaches, and administrators, we worked on a new standards-based report card for dual-language and SEI kindergarten programs, and we included the Social Justice Standards. The components in the report card reflect the four domains of the Social Justice Standards, and these standards that we're referring to are a grade span of K to 2. I know it's a little bit small, but if, if you'd like me to read them, but I'm, if, can you see them?
We have the handouts, yeah, we're good. Thank you.
Any questions so far? Another step that we've taken in ensuring that all children are engaged in these pedagogies, we are developing interdisciplinary units, which I'm sure you're aware of, and in these interdisciplinary units, we have the Social Justice Standards along with the SEL and approaches to play and learning. They're not standalone standards, they're woven in throughout the curriculum and are in all of the content areas. Part of this work, in order to provide teachers with some support, the SEI kindergarten mapping team included suggested activities within the maps, as well as creating a list of suggested resources that address the standards. The mapping team took care in selecting resources that can provide our students with mirrors, windows, and doors, and I want to emphasize that these are suggested resources that if any titles, you know, don't meet the, the needs of the classroom, the teacher can use the text in alternative ways. It could be reading an excerpt from the text, or talking about particular pictures, or paraphrasing key ideas. And just to remind you, these are just suggested resources that the mapping team selected and are not required. The teacher has the flexibility to choose the books he or she wants to use to address And this is just an example of the social justice, the Racial and Social Justice Union Committee. It's a group of teachers that, because this is such a new topic and the new standards that we're incorporating into the classroom, this group of teachers got together to create these guidance documents. And these two are suggestions. What they have done is taken a lot of the resources that we have in the maps and then just offer some, like, suggestions on how to use the resources in the classroom. And that is my brief presentation, but we are open to some questions and discussion.
Thank you very much. I'll open it up to the committee for questions. Member Dugan?
Sure, thank you. So, the, the read-alouds are suggested resources. Are there resources for, I guess, let me back up. This is all interdisciplinary, correct? So, in other words, if they're, if the teacher's teaching, assign to it, this will all be woven within it? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
So, it's not a separate?
Exactly.
This is our time in the day where we're gonna teach?
Exactly.
This particular curriculum? Okay. So, the resources that you provided, they're all suggested. Are there any required resources that the teachers have, or anything that they are bound to using?
So, currently, we don't have anything required other than the materials that they have in the classroom that they're using as resources. So, for, say, our foundational skills, they're using, you know, either reach-for-reading foundational skills, or they have, some schools have some other programs, but we don't have necessarily anything required right at the moment.
All right.
It's all just resources.
Okay, thank you.
Member Gately?
Yes. Did you have these books vetted by our EL, Assistant Curriculum Director, for reading levels?
For our ELA?
Yeah, for reading levels, because, like, I brought this one out to the community, and the person that saw it, he wasn't very happy with it. This book I love. This book I love. This book I love. But it's, it's like, I'm questioning whether they're the right reading level even to do read-alouds to kindergartens. That's what I'm questioning. I am no way and shape a kindergarten teacher, but, like, I know that when I had a child that was in my house read these four, look at these four books, I had them read one, and she couldn't understand a word of it, and she was in the fourth grade, but she came out and looked at these, and she said, "Oh, I read that in my fourth-grade class! Oh, I read that in my fourth-grade class!" So, I'm just wondering if they were vetted so that, they're great books, but maybe they need to be at different levels rather than kindergarten? So, I would think that the EL, the EL Assistant Curriculum Director would, would know the reading level, because even, even to read aloud, I brought a book over to Washington STEM, and I was reading the, oh, the Tech Tiger, that, the book that they wrote for Lynn Tech, and I was reading that to them, and by the time I got midway through it, when I started into the shops, they were already antsy. So, it was like, I don't know. So, I don't know. That's why I'm asking you. Did you have them vetted? Do you know what grade level?
Yep, so, they are, they actually, they're, they are within the grade span or the age span of our kindergarten students, but like I said, this is, there are, they are just suggestions, and if it doesn't meet the needs of your class, like, you don't, a teacher, the teacher knows their students. They're going to either read parts of a book or show certain pictures, but there's, it's, I understand, I know that antsy-ness at the end of a story, but I think, you know, the teachers really know how to navigate that in the classroom. If that particular book doesn't meet the needs, then, you know, the teacher can choose a different story.
Yes, because I, which one? Hold on. Weren't you gonna make pancakes?
I'm sorry?
Weren't you gonna make pancakes? Was it you? One teacher was gonna make pancakes. Pancakes, pancakes. I'm not sure.
You're asking me if I was going to make pancakes?
Were you gonna make pancakes with your kids? I thought that was very creative.
Oh, we did. We made several different types of pancakes.
So, so then I heard that you're getting a new curriculum for kindergarten.
Can you tell me a little bit more?
I got a message saying that there's a new, the kindergarten teachers are being trained in a new curriculum.
I think I need a little more information on that. I'm not.
Well, can you look into it?
I can see, as a kindergarten teacher, I don't know of a new curriculum that we've been trained on currently. There might be talks about a new curriculum, but there's nothing that I know of that we've been trained on right now. The only thing that we have that is actually new is what was just presented, which are the interdisciplinary thematic units.
Okay, talking about them, one teacher sent me this. If you're planning to, for the materials for next year, they would like, in the SEI thematic curriculum, they would like to see big books, diverse dolls and characters, posters, picture cards, Play-Doh, markers, kitchen, building materials, planting materials, small group books that each student could use to discuss and pair and share with. small group books, that each student could use to discuss and pair and share with audiobooks for our listening center, et cetera.
Love it.
So that's her wish list. That's what she would like to see, because it was like, a lot of people contacted me. A lot of people are very concerned about this curriculum, because it wasn't supported with the right resources. Even at Washington, their, like, stations, PlayStations that they have, they, they weren't supplied with enough resources for them to actually follow through with the curriculum, and I would like to see that. When you change this curriculum, when that does happen, because I heard it was, when you do train these teachers on it, if you could bring it before us, before you implement, I would like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there, Member Pena?
Well, I want to say thank you for bringing such a good presentation. I appreciate what you're bringing, you know, especially social justice, you know, teaching that at the kindergarten level. And face it, you know, it's not 1992. Our demographic has changed, and I really appreciate what you represent, you know, the diversity that you do represent up there, and I really, really appreciate that. I attended Read Across America, and I think I went to one of the elementaries I went, Shoemaker, and we read, I read the book Alma. It was phenomenal. I loved it. It, it, it fit well with the kids, and all the suggestions I seen here, I love it. It's, you know, what, it's what the demographics that we're, that we have now, you know, in our kindergarten, we have. And it's great to acknowledge, we have such a big, diverse, and a big, you know, big minority, you know, people, population in our schools. So I appreciate what you do. I really respect, I love it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Member Capola?
It's, it's in a good direction, but the, that one book, that A is for Activism, it concerns me because the vocabulary in there is, like, every single letter, the vocabulary is way over them. I, you know, I have one granddaughter in the first grade, one going into kindergarten, and I had the book at home, and didn't know what I was talking about. And I almost didn't know what I was talking about on a few of those pages. There were a couple of those pages, I was like, I'm confused. But, so it, it isn't, I, I like so many of these books, but I don't want teachers to feel as though, if they pick up a book like that in particular, that particular book, and are not comfortable with how do you explain everything in there? Because just, just one letter would, would take half an hour, an hour to explain each one of those identifying things under those letters. So it concerns me. I don't want kids to be frustrated. I don't want kids to feel uncomfortable that, you know, they don't know what those things mean, you know, in the grade. And I know it was, it was intended for kindergarten. So that's, that's just what concerns me, you know? But we're going in the right direction with, with trying to get some in, you know, some of social justice. But I do have, the one, I don't know, I, maybe everybody else has no problem, but when it comes to the report card, the first, the first one in the line is self-confident without making someone else feel badly about who they are. When I think of a kindergarten, like, we've only, I don't know, I think we only approve kindergarten report cards. I don't remember K to, you were saying it's K to 2?
The, the social justice standards are K to, K to 2. This is just from the kindergarten report card.
Okay, but you haven't gone up to the others yet?
Not yet.
Right? No, because we, yeah, haven't approved that, yeah.
We're working on it.
That is forthcoming.
Okay. But that one to me is, you know, we're talking about kindergartners, self-confident, you know, it's, how would somebody identify that in a student? You know, let's say it's a very shy student, you know, and they're just kind of shy away from, I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean making someone else feel badly, it's just that their own, they themselves are shy. So, you know, how do we mock a child like that?
So I could, I could.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So in kindergarten, a lot of what we do to understand where our students are is either through their drawings, and then they would then explain to us what their drawings are about, based on, you know, the conversation or the text that's been read, in order for us to understand that they are interpreting the story. So a lot of how they portray what they know is through writing and drawing. They're also kindergartners, who are very vocal, and will be able to tell you, "I am XYZ, and I love my skin color," for instance, or "I am brave," or "I am strong," or "I, I was born in Guatemala." That's a child, you know, affirming who they are with a teacher's support. Other students are also showing appreciation and understanding of other children's, I mean, their classmates', you know, identity. So that's one way we'd go about it in kindergarten.
Okay, but how would you identify that, making someone else feel, I mean, that?
Well, they can talk about themselves and how proud they are of who they are, in affirming their identity, without comparing others, but also open to how other students, you know, you know, share how they are about themselves.
Okay. Because I, I have no problem with the other three things. They seem fine, but I think I can see parents ending having some concerns over a mocking, or somebody deciding that, you know, that their child is making somebody feel bad. Just, it's very subjective. That's all I'm thinking. That's where I land on that one.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. The other thing is, what kind of training do the teachers have for it? Have they been having training?
So for the social justice standards particularly?
Yes, yeah, because it's on the report card. It's been, and have we had it on there since all three quarters? Were they able to mock? Right from the beginning?
For this year, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So we haven't had extensive training on the social justice standards. We, you know, the, the district did participate in Hope and Healing Professional Development. And then, you know, we did some professional development around the interdisciplinary units for kindergarten, but not, it wasn't like a huge focus on the, the social justice standards by themselves. Moving forward, with the work that we're continuing to do in June, in the summer, in September, we will have all the teachers, and maybe this is what you were referring to, Lorraine, I'm not quite sure, but we will be meeting with all the teachers around unpacking standards and lesson planning. This is for pre-K to grade 2. And this will be taking place in June. Throughout the summer, there'll be content drop-in sessions, like with the, with, you know, different contents on how to use the standards in our lesson planning using backwards design. And then there's also retreats this, this summer for the elementary, most, yeah, I think all of the elementary schools. So it's going to be a bigger focus moving forward. You know, we recognize that there needs to be more support around it, so, you know, we're just continuing to build, and it's, it really has been an evolution from the beginning. So it's going to continue to, to get, you know, to grow.
Have we surveyed all of the kindergarten teachers to kind of give us an idea of their comfort around it, where they haven't had the full training, you know, as far as mocking kids? You know, if they were, have been mocking for three of the, three of the quarters, or three tries, whatever you call them?
I have surveyed around the interdisciplinary units, you know, throughout the year, and I just did one a few weeks ago, maybe about a month ago. That kind of, it's really open-ended, just kind of asking for all kinds of feedback around it. So, and then I'll do another one at the end of the year, because they're not quite finished, you know, obviously with the unit, so I wanted to get another one done by the end of the year.
Okay.
And, I mean, that's, that's what I need to know, like, their, their feedback and their concerns and questions, so we can.
So I think there's also a nuance to standards-based report cards, in that they're not, students don't get graded, in the, in the traditional sense of how we think about giving feedback to students and families. And I'm sure that one of the teachers can speak to that, because it's really about noting a student's progress. And you would know better, Michelle, in terms of the categories.
Absolutely. And, and, you know, I think one of the things to take, and I, I really appreciate all of your concern and questions, but I think one of the things that I would, well, first of all, as an educator, I am thrilled that this type of mapping centers our students. As you mentioned, Mr. Pena, we have a very diverse student body. So when my students walk into my classroom, I want them to feel like they belong. I want them to feel like the curriculum is about them, and that's where this is coming from. There's no way that we're saying this is done. You know, there's a lot of workshops that still needs to happen for educators in the district. And one of the things that I know was offered, were drop-in sessions, to get familiar with, you know, the, the new developments. And there's more to come. But I don't want anyone to really, you know, think that we're all, no, we're not. This is a great starting point for us to be able to center our students. We often talk about how, you know, it's all about our students. Well, we have to actually make it about our students. We have to set the bar high enough, you know, for them to be able to reach that bar. You know, vocabulary is something, it's a great jumping-off point to discuss race and social justice, and it's not a one story that's been read, it's multiple stories, you know, that pertains to the standards. So that is part of the approach, you know? And I'm hoping, actually, the guidance document came out of the fact that a lot of teachers in the district weren't comfortable. And I'm grateful for the fact that teachers are able to say that they're not comfortable, because that's what we want, you know, teachers to be able to express themselves, so we can collaborate. And the guidance documents were created to give them some conversation starters about how to talk about this, because it's never been done, unfortunately. You know, we can't skip around it. We really have to address it, and we do so with care. I think we need to give teachers credit, that, you know, teachers will know how to use these resources once they become comfortable with the documents. Like we've done with any other text before. You know, the vocabulary is our words that we would actually pay attention to, and then delve into the text, so our students can get the full, you know, breadth and scope of what these standards are all about. So I'm very excited.
Likewise. Dr. Tuttweiler? Did you want to add? You're good? Mayor Nicholson, did you want to add?
Yeah, I, I just really appreciate the, the presentation. I, I think it's, it's so exciting that, you know, we're taking this initiative to grow as a district, to, to center our students. And certainly, I think, we're all asking good questions along the way about the best way to do that, and how to get everybody prepared to have their close conversations. And I just really appreciate your leadership in stepping up to, to be there for those conversations, to share your expertise and your experience with, with the district. I think it's wonderful that it's done so collaboratively, you know, with the LTU Social Justice Committee, with the administration, with, you know, centering students. And so I just wanted to thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to offer the last word, if I may, not just as the chair of the curriculum subcommittee. But I need to.
Dr. Magnolia? You have a question? If you want to be the last word.
Oh, okay, sorry. Member Gailey gets to ask her question, and then I'm going to nerd out for a minute.
So on the social justice, how do they get graded? What, what goes in these blanks?
I know it's.
Is it like a pass, a fail, a one, a two, a three, a four? Like, what, what is it?
Yes, it's, it's a one, a two, or three, or four.
What does each mean?
So off the top of my head, I'm trying.
You would know.
So there are rubrics, and to be honest, I don't know the rubrics off the top of my head.
Okay.
But according to our children, our students, you know, how they demonstrate sort of the final project for each standard, then they'll get one of those numbered, based on where they are on the rubric.
It's making progress. It speaks to how students are making progress toward, you know, achieving that standard.
So it would be developing, making progress.
Progress.
Met, similar to.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That kind of language.
That would be it. And how many people are on this diversity group committee? Teachers?
Which commit, I'm sorry?
Your committee right there, how many teachers are on there? Just you two?
No.
No. How many?
So are you talking about the Racial and Social Justice Union Committee?
Last count, sorry. Last count, Sheila.
About 40.
About 40. I have to say, during COVID, teachers showed up for this particular work.
Yep.
And we're really excited about it. So a lot of the initial work around curating the texts were done by these amazing teachers who showed up and worked through, and then we pared off sort of in, I think, my schools to compile a list.
Were there 40 from kindergarten?
No. No, there were different grade levels.
Okay. That's all. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Magnolia, I know you want to have the last word. A is for Activist is actually one of my favorite books. So we don't sit there and read the entire book and talk about all of these different words, but activist is one of my favorite words to introduce into a first-grade classroom. This unit in particular, we're talking about injustice of animals all throughout the world. Their habitats are being affected by deforestation, by our actions as human, how we are dumping garbage into the ocean. And we are talking about what activism looks like. We're looking at our, our literacy standards, and we're talking about cause and effect. What is causing this? What is the effect of this? How is this affecting our world? What are we going to do about it? How are you going to justify that this is wrong? Can you explain this? Can you be an advocate for this? Let's write a poster, and let's write how we're going to advocate for change. And so it does have a lot of big words, but I think kids have big feelings, and they have big thoughts, and they have big ideas, and they have big experiences. We have a lot of diverse students in our communities, and they have a lot of experiences that I would never even imagine of having, that they've already had. And so the opportunity to really come together and be like, you are seen, you are heard, your experiences count, I think it's huge. Jackie, I think, was very clear and good about expressing that this is not something that you are required to use, and you can just take bits and pieces of different mentor texts that are going to support you, in addressing the standards, and in meeting the needs of the students. This has been one of my favorite units to teach, and my kids are super excited about it. We're making our posters, they're being advocates, they're giving agency to know that they can be changemakers, no matter where they come from, what language they speak, and what their background is.
Now, that's an excellent explanation. Perfect.
Great, thank you.
Especially during times like COVID. Dr. Magnolia, I'm so sorry.
Go ahead. Dr. Tuttweiler, I will defer to you.
I know. I, I just wanted, well, I almost want to stand up and give applause, because I'm inspired by what you said. I'm inspired by what you said. I'm inspired by what you said. And I think one of the, as I will reflect, as I always do after meetings on the way home, one of the things that I find really refreshing about the conversation is this idea that we're centering students, not centering comfort. That is really, really important, because when we center comfort, forward movement stops. You may have the last.
Okay, so I, I just, my last word has to nerd out for a moment, so I'm going to apologize if I use, like, 24-cent words, okay? The first thing I wanted to say about A for Activist is that I love the scaffolding it provides. I think especially because one of the letters is T for trans in it, and we know that research says around age 6 is when kids who understand that they may not be gender-conforming, and just hearing that word, even if it's never defined, it affirms their identity. So I want to applaud that book just for that, because we know that the danger to our gender non-conforming youth is so high, that even something that's simple could mean the difference between life and death with our kids. And for me, that's worth that risk. Okay, so that's my first point. The second point is, when we're looking at professional development for teachers who are using this curriculum, I want to urge training in something called intercultural competency. Okay, so this is something that I actually train college professors in, and let me explain what this is. Basically, when any, I'm going to use the word faculty by accident, when any educators are delivering content that does not specifically mirror their own identity, their own racial and cultural salience is brought to bear on the texts which they provide. If they haven't done the work themselves to understand their markers of racial and cultural salience, they are less likely to actually deliver the materials in a way that meets students where they. likely to actually deliver the materials in a way that meets students where they are. So they can help their students develop their own racial and cultural salience, and therefore their intercultural competency, by having done the work themselves. So I want to just ensure that these materials are brought to their best use by allowing educators the space to explore these markers of their own identity, so that they can see why they're so meaningful to our students, especially when we have teachers who are not the same racial makeup of the students in their class. We know that when educators go through that process, they become better at modeling for their students a process that does not necessarily have to be the, you look exactly like me, so do the same thing I do. But we all have to go through this process of understanding ourselves within culture. So that's my last word. That was nerding out there for a moment. Thank you very much for your presentation. Any other questions before I gavel us out?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
This concludes the Curriculum Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I could just jump in for one second. I just wanted to recognize, I get emotionally annoyed. So the Racial and Social Justice Committee of the Lynn Teachers Union will be receiving a distinguished service award from the AFT MAFS on May 7.
Thanks, Tom.
And we will be representing and coming to that convention to represent their committee and our diversity. And we're happy and proud.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Do we need to roll call ourselves out?
I think we need to have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Now I gavel. Sorry, I gavel too soon.
I'd like to call to order the eighth regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Absent.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Peña?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
Could all please rise for a salute to the flag, followed by a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could all please remain standing in a moment of silence to recognize the passing of Linda Hemquist, retired teacher, and Cheryl L. Taylor, retired teacher. All right, so first item on the agenda is minutes from the third special meeting on April 7.
Make a motion to accept the third special meeting on April 7, 2022.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is an update on early college high school. Please, Dr. Tuttweiler.
So just by way of brief introduction, about two months ago, in my superintendent's report, I talked about a plan, an innovative plan, to create an early college high school on the campus of North Shore Community College, North Shore Community College in partnership with their team. We've been hard at work planning, trying to put this together, and it's getting closer and closer with each passing day. And so, we've invited Shannon to come and, and give an update. And I called her by her first name, and I apologized because I also want to start with a congratulations, a formal and a public one, because it's Dr. Gardner now.
Oh.
So congratulations. I didn't want to give it away by saying Shannon's Dr. Gardner, and then, you know, mess my whole jam up. But the floor is yours.
Okay. I'm here today to provide you an update on this project that we've been working on with North Shore Community College. We're designing plans for a new high school on North Shore Community College campus. This will be a full-scale, high-impact, immersive experience, early college for Lynn High School students. The concept of the project is what is called wall-to-wall early college, where every student in the school will be taking high school and college courses in every grade. It is still a regular high school, and in the first year, we would start with a ninth-grade class of 100 students. With each subsequent year, the program will add 100 more students, eventually growing to 400 students. The vision for the school will encompass equitable access, robust supports for students, academic pathways and connections to career. The shared design and commitment will reflect the high quality and deep partnership that has been built between Lynn Public, Lynn Public Schools and North Shore Community College over decades. The model will have an LPS high school principal, a guidance counselor, social worker, clerk monitors, and teachers for students' core high school classes, and provide the necessary services that students need and require. In the first year, students will take one to two college courses a semester, along with their required high school courses. We will start out with college courses that provide access points for all. As the students move from grade level to grade level, their college course opportunities will increase. Our goal is that students in this school will meet the LPS high school graduation requirements and be able to take a minimum of 34 credits, up to an associate's degree, depending on their individual needs and course plan of study. A 34 Gen Ed Foundation sequence will ensure seamless transfer to state institutions. In conjunction with the 34 Gen Ed Foundation sequence, students will have the opportunity to complete a comprehensive associate's degree within the liberal arts transfer program. While our core program will be liberal arts-based, we will maintain flexibility to allow students to pursue other academic pathways and programs of study consistent with their academic and career interests and advisement. The vision of this school requires that our faculty and staff work closely with their faculty and staff to provide the right combination of supports for students to achieve this scale of credit attainment. We believe that this partnership affords us a unique chance to work together and plan for different layers of support. The things we learn here in the design of this school will also help inform our work in the rest of the early college designations. We're excited about this new opportunity. We believe it's a creative way to approach our growing populations of students, while at the same time providing a terrific value for them toward college degree attainment. Due to the impact of the pandemic, this is, is an important time in history to apply energy and commitment to post-secondary enrollment and persistence. We know this new school will help us make a substantial positive impact on the number of students from Lynn who acquire a significant amount of college credits up to an associate's degree. If something wonderful happens in Lynn as a result, with greater numbers of college-credentialed students entering the workforce from high school, we couldn't be happier.
Thank you.
I'm going to pause. I'm sure you have questions to give you a chance.
Member Capola, then Member Peña.
How will the students be chosen for the first 100?
So, our first recruitment will be directed at Marshall Middle School students. So, the reason for this is that they're, they are the feeder school for Lynn English High School. So we feel that that will have the greatest positive impact on both those students and Lynn English High School. And is also, there is some proximity to, for the students who would, who would attend Lynn English to North Shore Campus in Lynn. So that would be our first, our first place of recruitment. And I think it will be a wide recruitment, because we're actually looking at recruiting, like, just under 25% of the class. And, you know, we, we're going to have to really explain this program, and it's going to be a commitment on the part of students and families.
And when does this go into effect?
Very soon. We're recruiting for September.
Wow, okay. So is that time to meet with families and, you know, make that strong commitment?
We have teams working on it now to be ready. I think that we just wanted to discuss with you.
Member Peña.
Thank you. Congratulations again to Ms. Gardner. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I love this. I'm excited about this. It gives a real equitable approach, you know, to many students, an opportunity that, I mean, face it, we came off COVID, you know, and this is going to impact our students. And we had a lot of hardship that came out of that, and, and I'm excited about this. So give those students that really need that opportunity, you know, to get some education, and really have a chance at, you know, and, and like you mentioned, just imagine students graduating with a, you know, associate, you know, degree, or entering the workforce. I'm, I'm excited about this. And I like that you're going to start in English. I know you already, I know there's like, like, an early college thing going on, right? They have some kind of program at, at English already, correct?
Yes, they do.
Yes, yes. So this will not only complement that, implement that. I'm excited about this. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Magnolia.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to do a point of information for folks who might not know, that those 34 credits are what's called, is what is called the mass transfer block. And it is the Gen Ed credentials that will go to every single public college and university in Massachusetts, and a majority of the private colleges and universities in Massachusetts. So I think it's really important for folks to know that this is a benefit for students of all sorts. And I'm saying this because some of our high-achieving students often think this is not for them, because they would just rather go the AP route. But I've had students in my classes that go this route of getting the Gen Eds, and they get full scholarships to places like American University, or Cornell, or almost anything. So there is no kind of barriers whether someone wants to stay here, complete an associate's degree that leads right into a job. I will say, accounting is one of our popular ones, just so you know. Or they want to get 34 Gen Ed credits, and the sky is the limit for them. I think that this is an excellent base to be able to springboard any form of educational attainment. And I, I think that that's a really important point to hammer home to the families. But also, the experience of educators like myself at the college, who can speak to the range of where students go with that, that mass transfer block, I think is really important. And I would just make sure that for the LPS side, families who might want to know these things could hit any of us up for experiences of, you know, where we have sent our students with just the 34 credits prior to transfer. So not even at that 60-credit associate's level.
Thank you.
Member Dugan.
Thank you for your presentation and congratulations on your doctorate. So you mentioned, and correct me if I'm wrong, did you mention a full administrative staff at the school?
Yes, yeah.
All right, have we started looking for that, or would that be, just kind of maybe explain that process a bit?
We haven't posted it. Yep. We'll leave that to Dr. Tuttweiler.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Tuttweiler.
So, we're just sort of following the order of operations. In your budget narrative, there was mention about, you know, the, the early college high school and a full complement of professionals that we think we will need to, to, to fully staff it. So that is in the budget book that you will receive tonight. And there's actually a new section titled Early College High School with the proposed positions. So we wanted to make sure we, we came here first, and then we will proceed with working on staffing.
Absolutely, thank you.
And I'll also say, I mean, we've been at this for, I feel like, November, December?
Yeah.
Many months, many meetings with North Shore Community College and their team, who've been incredible. It's a lot of work. And, you know, essentially a year of, almost a school year of planning. You know, we, we planned to open this thing in September, and it will not be perfect. And typically, when you start a new program, it's not perfect. But we're dedicating careful thought to every detail possible. And when you work with, with the North Shore team, like, they, they sweat the details also. But it's a wonderful partnership for what we think will be a really innovative and impactful outcome for kids. This doesn't exist, maybe one other place in Massachusetts, a school down the Cape maybe, has a similar model. But this is not a, a frequently seen model in the state of Massachusetts. Other ones, yes, but not here. And so, we're, we're happy to be on the cutting edge in bringing something to Lynn for our kids that we think is really going to pay dividends, under Dr. Gardner's leadership.
Yeah, no, yeah, this sounds very exciting. And I think just the benefits at Lynn English, too, just some of the alleviating some of that. I think we'll be able to see that immediately. So thank you. Yeah, this is very exciting. Thank you.
Member Gailey.
I'm trying to envision it. So, we're going to choose 100 students, probably from Thurgood Marshall. And I met a lot of those eighth-grade students, didn't we, Dr. Tuttweiler? And they're pretty darn bright. So anyways, so they're going to go to the Lynn North Shore Community College?
Yep.
And, like, are they going to go into North Shore like, like traditional college students? Or is it going to be like a section?
There, there will be a section for them to be working on their high school classes, but they will also be visiting other classrooms on the North Shore campus, like, right in the main building, too. So, that's where our administrative staff and everybody is going to be coming in to, we've, we've walked the campus, we've seen the rooms. We're really working closely with the North Shore staff to make sure that, you know, we have every, every consideration we would give to any other high school space that we're, that we're going to have. But we want them to also have, you know, a feeling of the college campus, too. And so, in the first two years, they're not going to have as many college courses as they will in 11th and 12th grade. So they'll be more co-horted within high school classrooms. They'll be taking high school courses. They have to take their MCAS. All of those things are going to happen, like any normal high school. But then they will, you know, depending on their trajectory, their own individual path, they can take more and more, you know? So it can, it can be a range. It can be, we're hoping for the minimum of 34, but that's going to depend on the student, too. And then, we can have that maximum of the associate's degree, which would be awesome. But it's just going to be depending on the students.
So, the other thing is, this starts off in the ninth grade, and every year, it will be successful, because I know you, and it will be successful, Dr. Gardner.
Thanks for the confidence.
I just have to say it, Dr. Gardner. But I also want to add, there's the 11th and 12th grade after-doc program that's been very successful, and a lot of students that were having a hard time staying in school are going to the after-doc program. So I just, everything you touch seems to change to gold. So I am, like, so happy. And what, could you tell them what you wrote your thesis on, or whatever it's called, your doctorate thesis?
It was problem-based learning in history and social studies.
That's awesome.
Student engagement in problem-based learning in history and social studies. It's a very boring title.
Interesting to you. Thank you.
Member Dugan.
Yeah, something else just came to my mind. In terms of after-school programs, sports, clubs, they'd be part of English for this, or? Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Well, congratulations, Dr. Gardner. And thank you so much for the presentation. I mean, we've been talking about early college in Lynn Public Schools for, for years now, and it's, it's just such a tremendous win for our students. And this is really just taking it to the next level. And I think, and I think I've said it before, that it's, it's almost a paradigm shift of what is K through 12 education, to have this level of, of opportunity at the, at the, for, for college credit. And, you know, I'm really grateful for your leadership, for all the, the, all the team that went, that goes into planning, all the, the educators having conversations with their eighth graders right now about their, about their future. And then the students, who, I mean, students who have pioneered it over the years, who are sort of willing to step up and, and take college courses, and the students that will pioneer this, this program. And I think, you know, it's, it's, it's a really nice example and compliment to the other offerings that are blossoming in Lynn Public Schools that are kind of thinking outside the box, right? Member Gailey mentioned the after-doc program, and also, you know, reminds me a bit of the Discovery Academy and, and taking these new opportunities, leveraging our strengths and our partnerships and our people. And really grateful also to the, the tremendous partnership from the North Shore Community College, obviously a key to all of this. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is a field trip request for Pickering Middle School Grade Eight to Cannavie Lake Park on June 15. What's the recommendation of that?
I am looking for the school committee's support for this annual event that has not happened in some time. So I'm thrilled that it's made its way back onto the agenda. One shift, it will be on June 10 instead of June One shift, it will be on June tenth instead of June fifteenth. But looking for the committee's support for this trip.
Motion to accept the Pickering Middle School field trip to Canterbury Lake Park on June fifteenth.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
All right, next item is discussion on technology for PAC meetings to be held in person and virtually simultaneously. Member Capola?
Yes, okay. The reason that I asked to have it put on the agenda is the PAC meetings have been only on the Zoom. So instead, a lot of parents had been asking about when it could be back in person. And so that's the thing. And I reached out to Dr. Tottweiler and I think he may have any answer for us.
I do. The the quick answer is yes. But I think at the same time, we will need to research the appropriate technology that allows participants in both environments to participate meaningfully. We've tried the simultaneous approach in the past in various settings and meetings and typically, the folks who are, if, you know, the core of the meeting is happening in person and there are folks, you know, participating via Zoom, they don't, they can't hear things that are being said and sometimes they have questions and people don't don't see them. So I I think it's a function of figuring out the appropriate technology and the right kind of approach so that everybody can participate meaningfully. In in the meantime, we are happy to offer that to to families. I will say, you know, the two parent advisory councils that we have, Special Education and English Learner, have both seen exponential growth in their participation since it's gone on Zoom. Case in point, the LPAC typically had five to seven parents who would participate when it was in person exclusively. Now they're averaging around seventy and they've seen over a hundred parents participate. Special Education typically had five to seven participate in person and they see on average twenty-five to thirty when it's when it's on Zoom. And so I want to respect and embrace the feedback and requests of of all of our families. So we will definitely figure out a way where we can do that well going forward. But in the short term, if there's a request for an in-person option, we'll accommodate that.
Okay, well, they have a meeting on Monday night, so I, they.
Yep, and so myself, there is a Special Education PAC meeting on Monday night and myself and the Special Education Director will be in this room. The consultants will be joining for that meeting and any other family members who plan to attend will join via Zoom.
Okay, the the other thing, when I was talking to Ms. Jamison in regards to it, and she, you know, told me what the numbers were, she said, you know, the Zoom got up to twenty, but, you know, that if, whatever, it's still kind of a low number. Because she mentioned that we're talking about three thousand students that are special ed students, so that's a very small number. And, you know, I reached out to somebody who is close to me and asked her, you know, have you ever attended a PAC meeting? And she said, I don't know what it is. So I think some of our special ed parents, maybe, if we could kind of bring them along and educate them that there's a lot of good stuff there. You know, when, this is many, many years ago, but when I started doing foster care, my first foster child did come with an ed plan and somebody directed me towards the PAC and it was very beneficial. So I think maybe some of our special ed parents aren't aware of that and what they could benefit out of it, you know, learning the law, learning, you know, all kinds of things in the presentations.
Yeah, that, I appreciate that feedback and I will partner with Ms. Jamison to, you know, figure out a better communication protocol. I will say, for certain meetings, depending on the content, the parent liaison will call all of the parents who, you know, who would benefit from participating. For example, if there was a life skills presentation happening, they would call all of the families who are impacted, that you would call, you know, spend a day or two calling those families. So there 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 is substantive outreach that happens from that office, but certainly don't, shouldn't have a scenario where you ask the parent about it and they say, I've never heard of it. So we don't want that. So I will definitely partner with her.
In the, the, do we use our electronic, like, sending message out, messages out to to parents on the cell phone, like we like we do if there's storms or it's closing, the stool messenger? You know, is that an option to do that for the special ed parents?
Absolutely.
You know, just maybe we should be using whatever, whatever is going to work to try to get a better turnout for them, yeah.
Member Gailey.
I was wondering, what time is that meeting Monday?
Six PM.
Six? Thank you. Is it like just an hour?
Uh, I I don't know that we will establish an end time. I think we'll have the conversation and when we've sort of gone the distance on the conversation, we will close it out.
Okay.
At that meeting, there will be the consultants who perform the program evaluation for the life skills program in our district. They'll be presenting their outcomes and so we're hopeful for a good turnout and a good discussion. And I won't put a cap, say we're ending at seven, although I do have and you have a building.
That's what I was concerned about.
So I will be leaving at seven, but the meeting can continue.
Okay, thank you.
Great, next item is the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget overview and vote to set public hearing date for the budget. Dr. Tottweiler, do you have?
I do, I'm gonna lean on Mr. Mower there to fire up the old, there we go. Okay, great. So in your packets, you should find the tonight's PowerPoint presentation also. Along with the agendas, there was a budget narrative document. That document will go in the front of the budget book and when we post it online, eventually that will be the introduction to the budget for any families who wish to to access a sort of broad overview of it. But this evening, I'm honored to present to you a proposal for fiscal year twenty-three. I realize that tonight you will be receiving the budget book for the first time. And we also need to set a date for the hearing, which I would recommend that we do after the presentation, if folks are okay with that. I'm I'm going into it, Josh. He's like, oh, he's talking. But tonight I'd like to offer you an overview of the budget, both how it was built, what it's designed to do, and other important pieces at a high level. It's my recommendation that you listen tonight, ask any clarifying questions if you have them, and then we can engage a substantive dive in the next three meetings on any aspect of the budget you would like. First, let me start with the budget at a glance. The Lynn Public Schools will receive an increase of a little more in total of twenty-eight million dollars in Chapter Seventy funds for FY twenty-three. The city's chief financial officer has indicated that the school department's budget allocation for FY twenty-three will be two hundred and seven million dollars, a little more than that. This represents a twenty-five point six million dollar increase over the FY twenty-two budget. The Student Opportunity Act funding was delayed, as we know, due to the pandemic. We're currently in the first year of the Student Opportunity Act funding. State funding for FY twenty-three represents the second of a seven-year commitment of the Student Opportunity Act to address longstanding issues in districts like Lynn Public Schools. I'd like to pause for a moment and acknowledge that this increase is historic for our district. I think many of us wondered whether or not the Student Opportunity Act would come to fruition and what it would mean in terms of actual dollars we can leverage in support of student learning and growth. There are five more years of Student Opportunity Act increases beyond FY twenty-three. Who knows what will happen in the future, but the first two years of funding create the possibility for a transformational change in our district. On the next slide, this should, this graphic should serve as something of a reminder. This was shared with you in the early winter months as an outline to process for the development of the budget. For the first time in my short tenure as superintendent, the outline of dates and benchmarks was pretty spot on and we're presenting this budget in right in line with expectations. I will reiterate the same message shared with you in the presentation of the budget development process. And that was to underscore that, it's underscore a process that is collaborative, streamlined, data and community, communication-rich. From the development of a new budget reflection format to the analysis of stakeholder input data, to touch points with building and department leaders, we really wanted to make the development of this budget to reflect work done with, not to. That does not mean that every request or wish was accommodated. It does mean that there was plenty of conversation around ideas and decisions. In many ways, the development of the budget reflects a building block approach. Each year, we engage a process starting from scratch. And that involves first, understanding community concerns and needs. In this process, we have brought, we we have broad community feedback we're bringing to bear on decision-making. This involves stakeholder input processes for the Student Opportunity Act, both in two thousand nineteen and in the current year, elements of the S R three survey and schoolside council feedback. With that information, before we begin to make sense of what we can include in the next fiscal year, we have to first deal with what we call off-the-top budget items. I'll say more about these in the next slide. From there, we will keep close the elements and objectives of the district strategy, student data, and substantive pieces of plans we've developed. Each plays a pivotal role in putting the pieces of the budget together. As we do each year, we engage principals and directors in a substantive process of analyzing need and turning this data into requests. We spend quite a bit of time processing these requests, which is, was made easier by a new Excel form that Josh Mower created this year. This is the fifth compliment I've paid you today.
I hope you count.
No one's keeping track. So far. Finally, my team needs to carefully weigh each request to ensure that we're creating a budget that will make possible our attempt to achieve the strategic objectives. Quickly, the, in the previous slide, I referenced off-the-top items. These are the things that are non-negotiable that must be woven into the upcoming year. This includes, but is not limited to, Step and Lane increases, transportation, and any shifts that we need to make from grants to appropriations in the event that a grant is expiring or to stay on the right side of grant funding regulations. With that foundation, I want to shift to setting the table with the intersection between the district strategic plan and the Student Opportunity Act plan. By way of reminder, the district's strategic plan was developed during the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. With the strategic plan complete, we were also required to develop a plan for how the additional state funds would be spent, Student Opportunity Act plan. Giving full respect to that process, it was no surprise to us that the same priorities that stakeholders identified during the strategic plan development arose during input gathering on how Student Opportunity Act funds should be allocated. As such, there is a perfect harmony between our strategic Institute, Student Opportunity Act plans. And in this slide, I apologize for the folks who are in the room, the text is a little small, but you might recall that by regulation, the Student Opportunity Act plans needed to be anchored in one of seventeen then, now approximately twenty, research-based strategies identified by DESI. On the left-hand side of this graphic, each 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 one of the proposed actions represents an action or strategy derived from broad input from the community and school-based stakeholders. Each aligns with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education research-based strategy and and pushes us closer to achieving one of our four strategic objectives outlined in our strategic plan. Over the next five slides, I will articulate in more detailed fashion how the additions we're proposing in FY twenty-three, embrace the Student Opportunity Act plan, and move us closer to meeting objectives in our district strategic plan. In this slide, we outline our plan to increase personnel to support the holistic student needs or mental health. We intend to do so by the addition of fifteen social workers, fourteen clinical supervisors, and one assistant director of social emotional learning. These additions help us complete our collaboratively-developed clinical model in the Lynn Public Schools. The model results in achieving clinician-to-student ratio of one to two hundred and fifty. This is the national recommendation. It also positions us to be far more successful in meeting the needs of all students, but also students with disabilities who have counseling in their individualized education plan. Clearly, this is part and parcel of a robust effort to meet the social and emotional needs of every student and family, as is outlined in the strategic objective number two, detailed in the bottom corner of the slide. With an existing evidence-based inclusion model in place for, in place, another focus of the allotment of Student Opportunity Act funds is to fundamentally and comprehensively address longstanding service delivery shortcomings in special education based exclusively on understaffing. For years, the Lynn Public Schools have struggled to meet the needs of students with disabilities. The staff have gone to incredible lengths to serve students, but caseloads have been unwieldy. With the addition, with the additional positions in special education outlined in this slide and the next, we expect to take another significant step forward in the program with service delivery. Next slide. Not only will this allow us to more reliably provide services on students' plans, we expect to be better meeting timelines. The focus of this part of the plan aligns with strategic objective number one, outlined in the bottom right-hand corner of the slide. In addition to service delivery, there are two additional positions which increase supports and a special, in the special education realm. An assistant director position is based on the recommendation from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in their program review. And the focus of that position will be squarely on or largely on data analysis and response specifically in the special education realm, as well as a principal for early childhood programs. Given the ever-expanding programs happening at satellite sites across the city in pre-kindergarten, there needs to be additional oversight and support that cannot be provided by building principals or central office leadership. Next slide. Since I became superintendent, improving the progress toward English proficiency among English learners has been a goal of mine, a goal of ours. Building on an inclusive plan already in place, the addition of twenty-five ESL teachers will allow us to maintain existing caseloads at a minimum in the upcoming year and decrease them in some places. Given the growth of English learners in our district and the expansion of the dual-language programming, we also need to create capacity in the language assessment positions, as well as an additional district leader to provide much-needed support. I will say more about this in just a moment. Finally, in the realm of instruction, we intend to add eighteen teachers in the realms of technology, art, music, and the broad category of intervention. The addition of these teachers allows for students to engage with and deepen skillsets in specific areas determined by need. Further, the addition allows elementary classroom teachers an opportunity for collaboration and development each week. This will replace the one-hour early release Wednesday feature in early elementary schedules this year. This aligns with DESI's research-based practice and supports progress toward a strategic, toward strategic objective number one in the right-hand, bottom right-hand corner of the slide. Moving on to the next slide. Moving on to the next slide, this is going to be the sixth compliment to Josh Moore. This year's budget development process required principals and directors to propose budget requests using a propel, a prepared Excel form. With each request, there was a set of prompts, the responses to which allowed us to make connections between the request, the district strategic plan, and foundational concepts of the acceleration of, of learning effort. As you can see in this chart, there's a significant number of additions in the FY twenty-three proposal that are connected to strategic objective number one, those are the ones in blue on the pie chart, which has a tight focus on improving instruction and professional learning, and strategic objective number two, which is in green on this slide, which focuses on mental health and developing strong school cultures. The same, next slide, the same can be said for proposed additions and their connection to the acceleration pillars. By way of quick reminder, the acceleration strategy is proposed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and includes specific moves and folkai. At a high level, the three major pillars therein involve excellent instruction, creating a sense of belonging, and establishing systems to monitor progress. You can see here that there's a heavy emphasis on instruction and a focus on creating a sense of belonging among students, the latter of which sits in the mental health realm. This is the purple and blue pieces of the pie chart. Instruction and mental health are prominent folkai in the Student Opportunity Act plan and the district strategic plan for certain, but have also been topics upon which there's been particular emphasis and concern by the community. So we are thrilled that we are focusing on those areas. Finally, on the next slide, the means by which we collect the proposals this year allows for an empirical determination that the overwhelming majority of positions proposed for FY twenty-three are direct service to students and families. In fact, when you combine the direct service positions, which are in blue, with the dual-purpose positions that are shaded in purple, and those are positions where the professional would perform some leadership responsibility, but also have a caseload of students or perform a direct service for students and families, we land at ninety-three percent of the additions proposed having a direct service function. Next slide. The FY twenty-three budget includes the addition of more than two-hundred positions, all of which are critical to supporting students' needs. In many ways, I believe that, that what we are proposing reflects the true spirit and goal of the Student Opportunity Act. Perhaps more importantly, it reflects the community's input. While the overwhelming majority of the positions reflect direct, a direct service function, there are leadership and operations positions proposed. They too are important. The support and guidance comes from, that comes from these positions is critical to the overall function of our beloved district. Further, the additions create the capacity to allow for deeper support of instruction or clinical service. Not only does our lived experience substantiate the need for leadership roles, the research consistently supports it. Over the years, we've been intensely focused on hiring leaders who are skilled instructional leaders. In order to perform the instructional leadership role, one needs to have the time and ability to do so. There are positions proposed in this budget that are designed specifically to create the capacity to support instruction more robustly. Some of these, some of those positions are as follows: program specialists at the elementary level and vice principals at the middle school level, plus the early childhood principal for special education. Each of the building leaders indicated a need for this position to allow them to focus on supporting teachers and other direct service staff in a more meaningful way. The same is so in the social-emotional learning realm. Of course, here, the focus is, is on supporting clinicians, but it's important to first understand and, let me back up, it is first important to understand the important and welcomed evolution of mental health supports in our district. Four years ago, we had nineteen social workers, supported by one administrator. With what is proposed in the FY twenty-three budget, we will ascend the clinical team to ninety-eight, which represents nearly a four-hundred-percent increase. This with the identification, implementation, and ongoing support involved with an SEL curriculum at the elementary level and soon-to-be middle school and high school levels requires capacity, to be sure. This is what, this is what necessitates the additional assistant director of SEL. There were two leadership roles proposed in the English learner department, a language assessment manager and a deputy director. To understand this proposal, I'd like to paint a picture for you of where we've been and where we are. Clear in this slide, you can see the number of English learners has more than doubled since 2014. The number of ESL teachers and specialists has more than tripled, yet we've added one administrator in the same period of time. This is tiny, so I apologize for folks that they can't see that. What's in the slide? We clearly have a commitment to direct service, and I'm not alone in my deep belief that what happens in classrooms and other direct support spaces in our district is important. All of the other professionals are working in support of ensuring that that work in those spaces is as good as it can possibly be. That involves providing all of the support, professional development, and removing as many barriers as possible. It also means having the individuals who can do the research, design, provide excellent, excellent professional development, and tackle all of the compliance issues. You can see in this graphic how the department has evolved and how the work has expanded, bless you, over the course of the past seven years. It is more, much more, and for good reason. This is the rationale for the additional leadership roles in this department. What I've highlighted thus far in this presentation are a number of additions or increases that reflect commitment to and alignment with the Student Opportunity Act and community feedback. The increase is significant, historic, in fact. There's a lot of good that will be done in our district with this proposal. I want to provide a few highlights of what this budget does for students, first and foremost. It increases access to mental health supports and allows us to fully implement our clinical model. We will be better able to provide more personal, personalized supports for students with disabilities and English learners. Where possible, we are able to reduce class sizes and maintain them at a minimum. Across the district, there are additions to, excuse me, there are additions that will enhance a student's academic experience, as you saw earlier this evening with Dr. Gardner's presentation. It allows us to begin a new and innovative early college program in partnership with early, with North Shore Community College. I also want to be clear about what this proposal will do for our professional family, who continues to work so valiantly in less-than-ideal circumstances. First, with the more than two-hundred additions in staff, we will be able to achieve reduced caseloads and increased supports in special education and with mental health. We're adding an opportunity at the elementary level for professional collaboration each week, and an additional opportunity for all staff for professional learning with an additional full day of professional development in the twenty-two-twenty-three school year calendar. And finally, there's increased purchasing power at each school in the supplies category, as well as the library category. Appreciate your patience, this is the second-to-last slide. Each year, I include a visual representation to reflect my thinking on the budget proposal. I've used this graphic in a few different realms for a few different reasons. The meaning, however, is the same. I'm excited about what this budget proposal can do for our students and our staff next year and beyond. It reflects significant movement forward and honors the input of our community. We've been on a different kind of journey the past two years, all the while moving forward. While it has been challenging and uncertain, we have moved forward. No one can say for certain what the road ahead looks like. I suspect it might look like, like what's depicted in this photo. You cannot see the end and where, and there are, there will be twists and curves, but there is nothing stopping us from moving forward on that path. With this perspective and this optimism, I remain excited about the next steps in our district. As I said in the outset, you're just getting this information for the first time tonight. My recommendation is that you take this information, the slides which you just received tonight, the budget narrative which you received with the agenda, and your budget books which you will receive at the end of the meeting, and prepare questions. The budget will be a prominent agenda item in each of the next three meetings. I look forward to that discussion ahead. I'm hap, happy to answer any clarifying questions you might have at present.
Mayor Magnolia.
This is a super nuts-and-bolts question, and I don't have the budget book yet, so I don't know if it's covered in there, but given that community was one of the values, have you specified if any of these positions are either itinerant or moving towards school-based in terms of how they're being created? Does that make sense, what I mean by that?
Try me from a different angle.
Okay. So we, I, I could take one of the positions, for example, as being like, say, a social worker.
Yep.
Okay. So let's say right now, because of the limited number of social workers, they're all itinerant in the system. Let's say in, in adding so many, now we're going to have all of them school-based. Is that in some way, shape, or form, if the position, not the individuals, is now going to be a school-based versus an itinerant? I'm, I'm, I'm thinking backwards here from our conversations about retention of our staff and this concept of creating community, and this seems like a really big question, which is better asked now than when we're actually looking at a line item, but designating positions that are school-based rather than itinerant, I think addresses both of those things simultaneously. But I don't know if it's designated anywhere.
So in, in the model, there will be sixty-eight school-based social workers.
So I guess where, where would we know how many are itinerant versus school-based? That's why I'm saying, I don't know if it's designated in the budget or where it would be designated. That's what I'm trying to find out.
So, so here's a, a clarification that might help, and I'll ask my team to keep me honest. When you get the budget book and you look, you know, school by school, department by department, with respect to the schools, we're very intentional about having positions that are attached to that school land on that school's budget page.
Okay.
So you can see.
That's what I'm getting at.
How many of this do they have?
Yes.
How many of that do they?
That's what I need.
But there, there are itinerant positions that sometimes live in a curri, on the curriculum page, for example.
Okay.
Or on the multilingual education.
But that also can be misleading, because an itinerant position, like the ELE position, they're, they're actually, they're placed in schools.
And that's why.
But they're overseen by the ELE office or the multilingual office.
And the itinerant piece of it is that if there is a fluctuation in enrollment, and we have had this happen, a couple of years ago, they had to take a half of an ESL teacher from Harrington and put them to Brickett, because Brickett's ESL numbers, or L-numbers went up, but Harrington's was at a place where they could afford to allow half of a teacher to go. So that's the itinerant piece of it?
Not physically half a teacher.
I understand, no, it's just.
Point five, sorry, point five.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to understand the overview, so that when I get the budget book, I can understand how I map itinerant positions onto individual schools, or if they're accounted for in the individual schools, if that makes sense.
Yeah, for, just, just a clarification. So you'll see social workers at every school, so that's where they're going to be, and the fourteen new ones haven't been identified where they're going to go, so when you go to the social-emotional page, you'll see fourteen sitting there.
Perfect.
As technically as itinerants right now.
Got it.
But they will be in schools.
But we just don't know where right now.
I figured. Thank you for the clarification, yeah.
Other questions?
All right, thank you for the presentation, look forward for the upcoming discussion.
Oh, we need to set a date.
Oh, right, this is a public hearing. Do we have a target in mind for one of the meetings?
My recommendation would be the first meeting in June. That gives us thirty days.
So that's the ninth, June ninth?
Yes.
What's the, the second?
Graduations are the second and third, with rain days on the sixth and seventh.
Okay.
So Thursday, June ninth, and what, the time that we typically?
It's usually at one, six o'clock, one hour before the start.
Before the start of the meeting, okay. What's the word of the committee?
Make a motion that the public hearing for the budget be set for June ninth at six P M.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetle?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Member Pena, any votes taken in the athletic subcommittee?
Did we, we tabled it right now? No, we tabled it.
Great. The curriculum subcommittee?
No votes taken.
Great. All right, I will turn this portion of the agenda over to Dr. Delwire.
Yeah, and this will, this will be brief. In your packet, there is the enrollment report dated April first, and also by regulation, a copy of the North Shore Education Consortium's approved budget for FY twenty-three. I welcome you to peruse that and, you know, send any questions you might have about it to me. I'm going to spare you my typical long superintendent's report, I just have an update, and it is in relation to the human resource generalist recruitment specialist position. I want to say that I appreciate the committee's willingness to engage in conversation with me over the course of the past two and a half, three weeks, those with whom I have spoken. The plan, we last discussed it on April seventh, the plan is for that position to go back on a personnel subcommittee agenda at our next meeting on the ninth. There will be an updated posting that you'll be, will be provided to you on or before May sixth, and so I look forward to continuing the conversation on that date.
Thank you. Seeing no further business, what's the word of the committee?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you.